Do they need a quorum?
Yes.
Let's go.
You can start.
No.
New hairdo.
Second.
I thought it was me. Calling this meeting to order, today being December 11, 2017, adequate notice has been given in accordance with the Sunshine Law. Notice was published on December 7, 2016, within New Jersey Star-Ledger, the official newspaper of the township of Springfield, and posted in the Annex Building on December 30, 2016. Please join me for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, Sam, if you would like to please call the -- rocall.
Sure. I'm filling in for Jennifer, unfortunately, she's not feeling well, so I'm filling in for her.
We wish her the best.
Thank you very much. Mayor Stempola's absent. Deputy Mayor Vesalo?
Here.
Mr. Tiger?
Yes.
Ms. Saraceno?
Here.
Dr. Labazo?
Here.
Mr. Gonzalez, absent. Ms. Grzabowski?
Here.
Ms. Benigno? Tara Benigno?
She's absent.
Absent. Vice Chairman Schneider, absent. Chairman Fernandez?
Here.
We have a quorum, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, let's get approval of the minutes from November, please.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the November 2017 meeting minutes.
Okay, is there a second?
I second.
Okay, all in -- yeah, we can all in favor of that, right? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Abstained.
All right, so we have one application. It's been on hold for a while.
I think a resolution is...
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, you're right.
Mr.?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Can I get a motion for that resolution?
I'd like to make a motion to approve application 9-2017-S, Cleveland and Springfield, LLC.
Second.
I second.
Okay, rocall on that.
Sure.
Mr. Mardini?
Yep.
Thank you.
Ms. Saraceno?
Yes.
Ms. Grzabowski?
Yes.
Ms. Vesalo?
Yes.
Mr. Tiger?
Yes.
And Chairman Fernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, now we have the application. Call them right up.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Alan Handman, from Morrison Handman hearing on behalf of the applicant, heal properties of Springfield LLC. Just as a short synopsis of where we are, this matter was presented greatly in July of this year. There were some requests being made for some additional information and some revisions to the plan, so we are here tonight to deal with revisions of the plan and enter the evidence, the traffic study that was done at the request of the board. I would just call the board's attention to something, something we're doing on the fly. We had made a number of requests of the municipality for all reports. Tonight, we were given a report from Mr. Disco that was dated December 1, but never submitted to my office or to my engineer, so that one's going to be done on the fly. Subsequent to that, let me just call, in support of that, let me just call Thomas J. Quinn, who is our professional engineer, who was previously...
Sure, Quinn, Q-U-I-N-N.
This is from Disco. Please raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Mr. Quinn was previously qualified, so we're just going to testimony. Mr. Quinn, subsequent to our last meeting in July, you prepared revised plans, is that correct?
Yes, I did.
Do you want to give the board the idea of what revisions were made to the plan and what you have done?
Sure. Very few changes were made to the site plan. Most of what I submitted back to Mr. Disco were some calculations, revised stormwater management, and sanitary sewer calculations. The largest change to the site plans really focused on the landscaping plan. That is... Let's see, what sheet are we at? We're on Sheet 3. So essentially, we have some perimeter areas that were shown to be mostly green. We had a number of trees, but we didn't incorporate a lot of foundation plantings in the last iteration. Based on Mr. Disco's comment, we have enhanced all of those green areas around the building to incorporate a lot of foundation plantings, such as azalea, hydrangeas, dwarf burning bushes, along with some grasses and ground covers, so that we've essentially tried to eliminate whatever was grass requiring mowing and create natural vegetation and ground cover. That's the extent of the changes to the site plan, except the addition of some stop signs and stop bars, but there's really almost no change to what you saw last time, visible change, except with regard to the landscape plan. I think most of the changes had to do with the architectural units, what kind of unit mix we're having, and also, you'll hear there's some additional traffic testimony based on some traffic counts that are traffic...
You were requested to provide certain calculations regarding sewer and other things from the site, is that correct?
Yes, well, there was some discussion in Mike's letter about a downstream sewer analysis. That's not something our office could undertake, because we would need a tremendous amount of input from the town. What we did do, though, and I spoke to Michael about this, was we compared the sanitary effluent leaving the buildings to the capacity of the receiving storm, I'm sorry, sanitary sewer pipes. And what that analysis indicated was that the flow, the additional flow we were adding to those pipes, was on the order of a quarter to a half percent of the capacity of that, those existing sanitary storm lines. And again, that's as far as we could go without knowing a lot more data about connections, what connections are, in fact, integral to the sewer system, and what kind of flows. I mean, that's something we could not engage in.
But those calculations, at least from the site, have been provided?
Yes, yes.
Just for our identification, you want to go through the report that we just got 10 minutes ago, and we'll see?
Sure.
How we anticipated the request?
All right, and if I miss anything, I'm sure Michael chime in. So I'm looking at his letter dated December 1.
Do we have that letter?
It's in your email.
So I'm going to jump down to site plan review, Ms. Lanis' comments. The first item that warranted any discussion was Item 16, and that was what we just talked about with regard to the downstream sewer capacity. Again, we did a capacity analysis for the pipes immediately along our frontage that are immediately receiving the effluent. Those calculations were submitted. I'm going to jump down to the item under stormwater management review. The next item that is indicated to be some, should be discussed, is Item 24. Mr. Disco had asked that we provide an additional drainage inlet down Blacks Lane to the south of our site. We have no problem complying with that. The current plans don't show it, but if an additional inlet is warranted, and I've never seen flooding out there, but I'm sure Michael knows it better than I, but if the initial inlet is warranted, we'll add that inlet there, so that won't be a problem. Item 25, for whatever reason, Michael did not get the second copy of the maintenance manual that we submitted. The maintenance manual is just a document that indicates what stormwater measures are on the site and how they're going to be maintained, some sort of roster. A second copy was submitted to the borough, to the town, and Michael just informed me he did not see it, so I'm happy to submit a third copy. Item 26, the last of the stormwater comments, we did some soils testing out there, because that's the, that's what the comment in Michael's previous letter indicated. He's also asked now that we provide some drain time calculations, which we don't have any problem with, the soils are extremely permeable there. He's also thrown in a mounding analysis, which is the first I've ever heard of that. I don't know where that came up or how that came about, but it never appeared in any of the other review letters. And essentially, a mounding analysis, it's what's...
Can you explain that?
Yes, I was just going to get into that. A mounding analysis is an analysis that you perform when you inject water in a subterranean area. When you do that, the water tends to kind of build up and then disperse down and out, so if you, if you fill an entire volume, let's say, the underground detention system, there's actually a stone bed underneath the porous pavement where the water is meant, the voids in that stone are meant to provide storage volume for that while it infiltrates into the ground. A mounding analysis basically asks you how far, how high the water is at a given distance from the infiltration pit. So you can imagine, as the water goes down, it goes down and out. So the reason it's called a mounding analysis is because the highest point of the mound is where the water's collected, and then away from where the water's collected, as the water infiltration to the soil, the elevation of the water drops. Again, that's not something that was ever mentioned in one of the letters. Generally, a mounding analysis is done when you are concerned that there may be adjacent basements that will be impacted by a retained volume of water underground. We don't really have anything like that in this vicinity. The only thing that would be impacted in any of our drainage facilities would be our own facility, because we've got two drainage facilities under the garages, and then we've got the one, the satellite lot in the porous pavement. There are no structures that would be impacted by that runoff, so I'm not quite clear on where the mounding analysis, the need for a mounding analysis arose, but I'm happy to entertain the notion, I just don't see a real...
Do you want to make comments on that now?
Do you have a plan on that?
There's no expectation that there would be a problem with the mounding? It's just that, as part of the mandated NJDEP stormwater manual, it's mentioned in there for any, any of the techniques that require underground seepage retention. So just, just really perfunctory in nature for that. There's nothing on the stormwater end of it that's listed that's going to, in my judgment, be problematic for the team to, to address. Do you think they should prepare this study? I think they should do it, only because it's...
But enough.
It's discussed in the...
That's fine.
NJDEP manual, so.
Okay.
I don't anticipate that being anything other than, you know, dot in the i's, cross in the t's on that. You know, that area has some issues, that we don't want to be able to be 100% certain that there's nothing.
Absolutely, yep, absolutely. What about number 16 on his report?
Right, we just spoke about that a little bit.
That's the one that you said...
That's the one where I said we'd engaged in a calculation of the effluent, the new effluent introduced into the existing sanitary sewer on each of the property frontages.
And what was the number you said, point what?
It's a quarter to a half percent. In other words, our effluent introduced into the system represents a quarter to a half percent of the entire capacity of the slot, of the pipe, based on size and slope.
Which closes sewer authority, basically.
Which goes to another inlet that other people are connecting into that goes to the sewer.
That's correct.
So we don't know, we don't know exactly if your point, would you say point five?
It's, yeah, it's a quarter to a half percent.
Let's call it...
For each one of the frontages.
Will that put, will that taxi the existing thing? I mean, a lot of people, a lot of the residents have talked about that their sewage runs up because of the overflow in that area. So the reason that I suggested, and I know Mr. Vice Chair suggested it, was to make sure that we weren't going to put capacity downstream, because we have another 120-unit development that's going to connect in, on that 100 and what? 130. 130, and then we have another planned, another thing. So we will, you know, when you start stacking them...
Sure.
Your quarter can add up to a lot more, so that's one of the things.
Oh, understood.
Glad, Mr. Disco, to help us.
This would be an off-site condition, which is, we comply with the redevelopment order, so downstream conditions are really not our purview. And again, I could not tell you how many connections there are at sewers downstream. So we've analyzed the sewer segment that we're tying into. What happens downstream, I really couldn't say. I did, I will tell you this, though, when I first got involved with this project, to engineer this project, because the plan had already been developed and approved by the governing body, and I was asked to engineer it, my first question when I came to meet with the professionals, was do we have any sewer problems? I was told no. So that did not lead me to believe there was any downstream analysis warranted, nor were we responsible.
When was that? When did that?
Oh my gosh, that would have been last year, perhaps? It was right before we engineered this. It was, it was a year, maybe a year and a half ago, whenever this plan...
Yeah, it had to be more than a year.
No, I doubt it. This plan was initiated only last year. It wasn't very, I mean, the concept had been around for a while, the site plan had been around for a while, but the engineering of it was within the last year.
We want to hear from our engineer to give us a little more context, but we'll continue.
Yeah.
That's essentially all of the salient items that I think I need to discuss with you on Michael's report, unless, again, there's something else you want clarification on.
Well, we'll let you, yeah, let's, let's hear your response.
Sure, so, in the absence of any data, we just wanted to verify that the receiving sewers could handle the flow from this new project. Sam was able, was kind enough to give me the sewer maps, and you've got a sewer line on Blacks Lane, which really begins on Blacks Lane, there's nothing upstream of it, so any, anything from Building B going towards Blacks Lane is certainly, the eight-inch pipe there is going to be ample to handle that. It then goes in an easterly direction, direction towards Springfield Avenue. I can't speak to whether there's any problems in that area or not, but the immediate receiving sewer is going to be, have, have the capacity. To the west side, we're building Agos to Church Mall, there's really only, it's shown about less than 1,000 feet of pipe emanating from the Milburn border that goes under Route 2478, that's coming to the Church Mall area. So again, an eight-inch pipe, NJDOT minimum slope, is going to have ample capacity to take the flow from here. It was just an exercise that they should document that for the record. Again, I can't speak to any town-wide problems in this. I know Sam has mentioned that we do have, on a normal dry flow day, you have capacity in the sewer system, but there is the potential on wet weather events that Springfield may exceed their flow rates, and that was, that's always a concern. Would it be helped by making the pipe a 10 and 10? No. No, it doesn't matter, it's just the receiving of where it's going to.
Yeah.
Have they proposed any...
It's relevant, yeah.
Have they proposed any INI treatments, such as insulation?
I'm not aware of any. You open yours. I think I mentioned that in an earlier TV letter.
Okay.
Can I ask Mr. Disco?
Sure.
Mr. Disco, if you can help me, I was, I drove down the site home from the train today, and I guess I'll first talk about Blacks Lane. I went out and determined, because we had an initial discussion of trying to make it a two-way, widen the road, and to me, it didn't seem, you know, given the fact that you're going to have 30-something units servicing Blacks Lane, that the applicant couldn't take four or five feet, or try to acquire from CVS, or use the township for the public to condemn, to be able to make that a two-way road, given the fact that that, that road is going to directly service these buildings and the traffic. And the reason I bring that up is because we don't know if someone makes a left out of that parking lot and then starts going up Blacks Lane and then causes a collision from someone coming in. Plus, you know, I, plus, the second standpoint, my second question is, when you go on to, I guess it's Arcadian Gardens Way, is that what?
Academy Green.
Academy? It's a road, seems like that way, but there's no clear, there's no striping on that road to determine that it is a road, people park in different places. What did you notice out there, and what can we do to make that more defined that that's a road? Then people just, you know, cutting through, because cars were in, when I drove past, were all over the place, tonight around 5:00. So we'll separate the... Two questions. The two points. So I'll start with the second one. On Academy Green, that, as far as I know, that's a municipal right-of-way in a road, which happens to have perpendicular parking on both sides of the road. It's a big carway. Yeah. It's a 66-foot right-of-way. I measured the roadway of Academy Green at Church Mall at 26 feet. At the other end, near Blacks Lane, I measured 28 feet from the curb line on the south to the striped parking stall on the north. So you've got a 26 to 8, 28-foot wide roadway in there, just so happens that you have striped parking stalls on both sides of it. On the north, really the church side of the street, and then on the south, what would be, you know, the back of Sarah Bailey.
Yeah, yeah.
I think the striping there certainly could use some updating. It's faint, it probably hasn't been restriped in a long time, that might certainly help. I think the fact that it's a very long parking area kind of blurs the delineation of where the roadway is versus where the parking area is. What can we do to make that?
Fix that.
What can we suggest to fix that? The... And that's both ways, too, people can go. It's a two-way street, that's correct. Well, one option is you could delineate it with curb, depress curb where the parking areas are, but realizing you're basically going to get about a one-inch or one-and-a-half-inch curb reveal there. The curbs in the area are granite block curbs, so you're not necessarily getting a white NJDOT concrete curb there that, that would be visible. But you could put a curb in there that would delineate the edge of the road versus where the parking area is, or you could accentuate it with striping there. We're basically using striping as opposed to a curb line there. So you could, you could... What do you suggest? What's, what's, what's something that we should suggest to the applicant? The cheap option is the, inexpensive option is striping it and restriping the parking stalls, perhaps, whether that's on, on the applicant or not, I wouldn't share with you. Or you go to the installation of the depressed curving there. Again, on, I don't believe the applicant's property has that parking there, it's really the adjacent property to the west, which is Sarah Bailey, and then across the street on that. So I don't know if I've answered your question with that. You could do these things, but... I wanted, we're going to ask Alex in a second, what about the road? The road that I met, on Blacks Lane, when I measured it, and I did this, I think, for the July meeting, and I did it again today, it measures 18, 18 and a half feet wide. So it's conducive right now in the existing condition only to support a one-way traffic pattern. I think there was discussions about reversing the traffic pattern, I don't think that makes a lot of sense.
No.
Because you're not making left turns onto Morris Avenue. I think Linden across the street prohibits that left turn as well. You could do the two-way, but you'd have to widen the pavement.
Yeah, we did talk about that.
Well, we did, and I think the applicant said that it was too high of a grade, what we, is that correct?
Yes.
What we, you went out there, what would have to be done? Well, on the west side where the, and I don't remember the name of the apartments, but essentially, your northwest corner of that intersection, you have a four-foot wide concrete sidewalk, which rims immediately behind the granite block curb that's there. A lot of that is a depressed granite block curb, because there is essentially parking there. So you have a one-inch curb with a four-foot wide concrete sidewalk, which is not excessively steep in any measure. On the CVS side, you have a granite block curb there, and then there is a slope upward where there's trees that go towards their drive-through pavement, if you can envision that. When I was out there today, they're certainly sloped, but you could accommodate a widening there by constructing a wall. The first, if you can visualize where the satellite parking area is, the one to the east side of Blacks Lane, across from Building B, I basically was stationed there, and the nearest part of the CVS property there, there's a, the first tree I measured to was about six feet from the curb to the tree, and it went up in elevation about two feet. So you could certainly accommodate a widening there of two, three, four, five, six feet before you have to take out the tree, and then you would have a wall height there of about two feet, worst case, maybe two and a half, three feet. So technically... Who owns, do you, you did a survey on this, who owns, do you...
Yeah.
Okay. Well, before we get to that point, there's, there's an 18-foot wide pavement in a right-of-way, which is shown as a minimum of 30 feet. 30 feet at Morris Avenue, essentially 30 feet at Academy Green, and it's not uniform, it widens out to, if you scale it, it's 44, 45 feet. So within that 30 or 44, 45-foot right-of-way is an 18-foot road, which means the municipality does own some property on both sides presumably of the 18-foot. And some of it would be owned by CVS, or, or the, not CVS, whoever owns that. As you go further beyond to get to a 30-foot wide, you're certainly at that point going to be potentially into a, a private right-of, private property. Wouldn't it make sense, given that we're putting 36 units here, that this is going to be the, one of the primary roads in and out, that it would make sense from a long-term planning to widen this? You know, the applicant's getting a very high density in this area, putting 36 units with parking spread out, would it make sense? You don't have to shake your head, I'm asking my engineer, not you. I know, but you're shaking your head when I'm asking the question. I'm asking him for the answer, not you. Please, Mr. Disco. I, I think if you're asking, should we have a one-way road there or a two-way road, what's better, certainly a two-way, two-way traffic pattern road is better. And it's better in this regard, because anybody who wants to go east on Morris Avenue right now has to go to the light. I think that's understood by everybody. If somebody wants to go west, right now, again, the only way to go is to the light and make a right turn. If you had a two-way pattern there, you could certainly then avail yourself to a right turn out of Blacks Lane. So I'm not suggesting that this is the panacea of solving traffic problems on Morris Avenue, but it certainly, you're asking me from a long-range perspective, and from, does it have any benefit? Yeah, there's benefit to be two-way rather than one-way. One last question, then, is the traffic light on Church and Morris? Yes. To me, I mean, I didn't sit there and time it, but it seemed like a longer traffic light when I did the loop. If we didn't do that, and with these units that went in, and other planned stuff that's there, it could cause queuing further down, where people wouldn't necessarily be able to get through on the first light, in some cases, in the future, thinking long-term. Right, I did the queues when we first met in the summer, before I had the benefit of experiencing the school. I did a phone conversation with the, whatever you want, the, the school leader, for lack of a word, to get, get a sense of how many cars they got, what the drop-off times were. They were very concise in terms of the morning drop-off was centered around 9 o'clock, 20 minutes before, 20 minutes after. With the more recent application, I did go out and, and add that into the queue, and what I found in the morning queue on the one day I went, was the worst case was five vehicles. Now, you only have nine seconds, seven to nine seconds, Mr. Steiger indicated it could go from seven to nine seconds, and that, that jives with what I measured in the field just by, by stopwatch. So the question is, in nine seconds, and it's one of my comments there, I was going to have them respond to that, how many vehicles could get through a green nine-second time? When I saw the five... One texting on the phone there. Well, when I saw the five cars queued there, I, I saw four get through comfortably when there was stacked four. When the five were there, what they did, and I put it in my memo, is they de facto made two lanes. It's a very wide partway there, so you can get cars side by side there, and we had two cars going one way and three cars going the other, so they basically made themselves two lanes for, to get rid of the queue of five. So widening the other road could alleviate some of this congestion, too?
If I may, really quickly, that, just, I have a, I have a quick question. Where you're proposing this, this two-way street, the widening, is that the entrance to the CVS? Is there an entrance on the right-hand side?
On Blacks Lane, yeah.
On Blacks Lane, correct? So that's a, that's a do-not-enter there, so if somebody's trying to leave CVS, they can't go out that way. But they, but what I've noticed is it's very dangerous. Individuals, yeah, yeah, thank you. Individuals that are making a left there off of Morris Avenue are cutting this way into that entrance to CVS. They don't, it doesn't run completely perpendicular, so that... So that presents more of a, that presents an additional issue. And understanding your point for a long-term planning and to alleviate traffic conditions, if you do something like that, the street does not run completely, it's not a, it's catty-corner, thank you. It's not a complete ninety-degree angle. So we would have to look at something like that as well because it may present a larger issue because when people are coming off that road, they are not going speed limit. I could attest to that. I've seen that numerous times in that area. So they're speeding, they're cutting, so these cars are coming from the opposite direction of Morris Avenue, and then you have cars, if we were to, if this were to continue and come to fruition, but there would be cars coming up this way. I just see that being a very bad problem. You know, I'm just, I'm just thinking of that entrance there. That's my one concern.
Let's do this, if we may. I think you bring some great points, and we're going to hear more from Mr. Disco. Why don't you, why don't you guys continue? We'll go through some more of these reports, and then we'll hear from Disco, ask questions.
I think it's a whole, a whole traffic testimony.
Yeah, that's what I want to hear, the traffic engineer, on some of the issues that are being discussed.
Maybe we'll cover those.
Yeah.
At that point, okay.
Yeah.
Noted. Thank you.
Well, the only thing I need to clarify is Mr. Michaels' record. We not agree at the end with the architect on his unit count, on the box unit count.
Oh, Mr. Michaels?
Yeah, Mr. Michaels, right, right. We had, through the machinations between us and the architect, our unit mix didn't agree with the architect's. The architect's is the unit mix we're going to be using. I ran his numbers versus our numbers, and the parking, I really was only concerned about the parking. The parking demand is exactly the same at seventy-two spaces. So although our plan incorrectly summarizes the unit mix, when we plug in the correct unit mix, we still require seventy-two parking. So there's no change to the site plan associated with that error.
Bob Michaels gave you what had to be affordable versus not.
Right.
With one, three units, a third bedroom?
Is Mr. Michaels' report?
Is Mr., when is Mr. Michaels getting it?
When is Mr. Michaels getting it, Mr. Martin?
Probably various.
Okay, so we'll.
The answer was, let me deal with it differently. It's in Mr. Michaels' report. That's not where we got it from. There was an initial number in Mr. Michaels' report, which we created for the July meeting. Subsequent to that, we had meetings with the municipality to deal with the developer agreement. Council's here. And he came up with a different number that was higher, and those had to be reconciled before we could make a revised plan. So we're here now with a higher number as indicated by the municipality, which Mr. Michaels has now adopted.
What's the, can you tell us the account?
Five versus six.
What is it?
Five versus six. You look at Mr. Michaels' initial report, he indicates that we needed five units, and we provided those. Subsequent, we found out that the town's position was their settlement with COA required, we needed six units. So we had to revise the architectural to provide the six units.
What was the breakdown of one, two, and three bedrooms?
Two three-bedrooms, three two-bedrooms, one one-bedroom.
All right. If Mr. Michaels is fine with that, then.
Yeah, I can only echo what Mr. Quinn said in terms of the parking. Whatever change was enumerated here does not affect the park.
Quick clarifications.
Sir.
The, wasn't sure if you were going to incorporate infiltration and inflow treatments as requested on comment sixteen by Mr. Disco?
I and I?
Yeah.
That would be something the applicant would pursue. I personally would not pursue that. I don't know. I mean, that would be something that would be discussed with the town and the applicant directly.
And the mounding analysis, are you agreeing to do that or not?
We'll do it. Michael seems to think it's necessary. We don't want to be contentious. I personally don't think it's warranted in this case. I never do mounding analysis unless there's residents nearby. But again, for completeness, I have no problem with that.
What about the debt? We have to still discuss the two-way road, but what about kind of making? What is, is it, is this something that we, for Academy or?
Well, let's hear their.
Hear traffic.
Let's hear their traffic.
No, with the striping and stuff of the Academy Green or getting, because right now it may be a street, but people park in different places. There's no designated what's the road and what's not. Is that something that we can ask the applicant to stripe that area? Is that a reasonable?
I don't see it being a problem.
The answer, we're just giving the striping. The applicant is willing to do that as an accommodation.
And what about the I and I? Would the applicant, what's the situation with that, if it's not on engineering?
It's not my decision to make on what the applicant's willing to do.
I'm asking the attorney.
I don't know either.
It's an analysis of the sewer system.
No, that's different. That's using, using insulation and manhole inserts.
Yeah, he's looking, right. He's looking to try to preclude any infiltration that may be happening now.
Or just use techniques that were mentioned.
On-site. Are we doing it onsite?
That's a question I don't, I don't.
Maybe you can lighten us a little.
Typically, when you do I and I mitigation.
Right.
It's not necessarily onsite. You find manholes that are subject to water ponding. You put the inserts in. The inserts cost sixty dollars.
Those are cheap.
Before I say yes or no, I'd like to know what we're talking, we're talking about the manholes on Blacks Lane and.
Was there any in your report that you would recommend or is it?
No, again, what I pointed out is you're mandated to do stormwater management per your ordinance.
Right.
So the analogy is when somebody builds something, they have more runoff. You want to control that.
Correct.
The same scenario with sanitary sewer, you're having more sanitary sewer flow. Mr. Quinn has addressed the immediate capacity of the area. What I can't speak knowledgeably of, because I'm not the municipal engineer, is does Springfield have sanitary sewer problems? I'm aware that they have, they exceed their flow rates many times a year, and that's, you're subject to fines on that. So I'm bringing it up, and it's an awareness for the board, because we brought it up on another application as well, that as you add flow to the system, the immediate area is going to handle it, but what happens downstream of that? So I've asked the, you know, I brought it up, the applicant could consent to mitigating whatever their projected flow is so that there's no net increase downstream. It's the equivalent as the storm, which, you know, I think most people are.
So now, now you're telling me that we could be really causing a problem with continuing exceeding? Is that, I mean, you were the liaison to the.
Yeah.
Is this, are we getting fined all the time for this?
No, well, we, we have been.
They have not fined.
They have, it's not been a form, they have, our VSA has fined municipalities in the past for that. Springfield has not been formally fined for this. However, we have experienced many times an exceedance of our flow rights in town.
Now, last year, well, actually started probably two years ago, where we were looking into where some of these leaks were coming from and where some of these issues were. Were any of the issues in and around this area at all that we were looking into? I mean, you were putting in.
Sam.
Yeah, no, Sam, what was it? We did, Sam, we were putting in the.
We, just to give you a quick history.
Yeah.
We do have an issue with I and I, inflow and infiltration across the township. But it's very difficult to pinpoint the locations of those infiltration and inflow problems. To do that, last year, we had a engineering service contract to do a analysis of the entire system in the township. We divided the system into six large sections, and we tested those sections. And we basically were able to narrow the problem to additional smaller sections, and that's where we are now. We are now in the process of doing investigation work such as smoke testing, metering of the sewers, dye testing, all that stuff, to be able to find where those problem areas. Did we find problems in this facility? Yes, but it's minor compared to other areas, but it's a system-wide problem.
No, I understand that, and I understand you were doing the dye test and the smoke test. I get it. And again, my question was, so when, did you do, you did something in this particular area?
Right.
And there were some issues.
Minor issues, yes.
Minor.
And the three roads servicing this proposed site?
I'm sorry?
On one, on the three roads servicing this proposed site?
I do not believe we had major issues on those streets, no. We, the issues we had, and again, Tom's made a statement earlier that he checked with the township, and the township said there's no problems. The township never said there's no problems. We said there's no capacity issues.
I think you're right.
Okay?
I think you're right.
But we do have a problem. We have problems with backups all the time. And, but the problems are not really related from residential unit as much it is from napkins that's supposed to be degradable, but they don't break up, and they cause backup in the system. There's grease in the line that causes problem. So we do have problems in that vicinity for sure.
But would you recommend. Rowway Sewage Authority and get a permit, and they're going to ultimately give them connections or not connections, right?
I'm sorry?
They have to apply for.
They have to apply to Rowway Valley Sewer Authority, and based on the capacity, they will get the permit.
In the, in the immediately adjacent area, is there anything that you would recommend for I and I? That's the only question.
There's a lot of manholes that can be rehabilitated, so there can be some manholes that can, can be corrected and to help stop or slow down the infiltration through those manholes. Covers can be replaced. We can put covers that seals the manhole itself so that direct inflow doesn't get in. So there are, there are definitely manholes that can be worked on in that area.
Okay. But ultimately, it'll be Rowway that grants.
I got you. I got you. So, all right, continue. Let's keep going. I would like to, I really would like to get to the traffic study and other issues. So why don't we let you finish, then we'll go, and then we'll.
I actually have nothing further.
Okay. You're going to be here now?
Yes.
Oh, perfect.
Thank you.
Next, I would call Rocco Campanella with the architect, did the revisions to that particular plan.
Can you raise your hand? You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Campanella, based on our meetings last time and discussions that were had, have you provided a revised plan?
We have. We have provided revised plans for both buildings, and I'd like to review that.
Do you listen to that overview of the recent work, the plans the board saw on July 7th?
Sure. The recent middle for the smaller building on.
That's different than what I'm looking at.
Okay, this is drawing A two P of the Church Mall building.
We have A three P.
Billion.
A two P?
Yep.
I don't know. Does it look like what's up there on the screen?
Yep, that's it.
No, but like, you have, no, wait, that's not the same. You have, that's not the same area, is it? A two P is, is, is not the same thing you did. My A two P, we're different.
The one that was sent.
This is our project number zero-three-one-eighty-A.
Hey, see, I have the same one downloaded from.
I know. This is what, this is what the township.
Look in your computer, the one online.
What was emailed to us and what was given to us in a packet.
Okay.
And I didn't bring my laptop, so I don't have.
Jerry, do you want one?
No.
Can you give me a minute?
I mean, I could upload it on my phone.
Yep, that's the. Yep.
Do you mind?
No. You're okay now or?
Yeah, well, I think we're good. You guys are okay. Do you have, you mailed it from the drop-off on this side? Yeah, we're good. So I apologize because what was emailed to us again, and what was given to us in our packets were a little different, and it might have to do.
So I'd direct your attention to the second drawing, A two P, when we had discussed with the board, and the board wanted to see some options for providing screening of the parking for the cars that were under the building where the master plan recommended, that we suggested that we try to screen that parking wherever possible. So we had essentially an open arch design where a car would have been, which is the original design. We have since added two options, option A and option B. Option A totally closes that archway. We still have the silhouette of the archway shown, but we essentially continue the brick wall, so it would be a closed, totally screening that parking. With option B, we just extended a low wall so that you would still have the opening of the arch, which we thought was important, but still establish a low wall to screen the car. So we're prepared to do any one of those three. It's still my opinion that we think the open arch is the safest so that it's illuminated at night, people can park and come and go. Yes, you'll see a car partially, but we think with the landscaping, and it'll be mitigated by the, partially mitigated by the arch design. However, if the board prefers one of the other two options, we're, we're okay with either one. So that's essentially the change for the smaller building. Okay, from the drawing set of zero-three-one-eighty-B, the larger building on Church Mall.
Which one?
And that's drawing A one P, just the cover page. I want to focus your attention to the floor plan title where we listed the quantities of the COA units that we're adding on that floor. The only floor that will have the six units will be the second floor. And we have listed the quantity and the location of those units, and the floor plan also shows where they are.
So are they evenly dispersed or are they all in one, one section?
They're generally in this section. The only two units in the front that are not COA are on the front end of the building. So they're all next to each other.
You're gonna, yeah, you're gonna have to choose the second option because.
I think the section four-four-one of the redevelopment plan says that when parking is located in the ground floor underneath any floor of the building, that portion of the parking area excluding access driveways underneath the building shall be fully enclosed so that it's not visible from any street. So I think, I think it has to be option B, just. Right, just for the board. So it's really not, right, not. Right, not a better. Okay, sorry.
I mean, this, this doesn't.
Picture doesn't show, but the description in writing does. The pictures of that building shows that that's open. The writing says it should be closed.
Yeah, but if we want to go the alternative, we have the right to.
You can grant a variance.
We can if we. I mean, because I don't want to.
What the board, we had discussed this with the board at the last meeting, and they asked our opinion in terms of what we would suggest. So we're giving you three options. We think that they all work, and we still think that the open section is the safest for be able to park, especially at night, so that you can get in and out of your car. It's always visible. The front entrance will always be visible. The other two options are also very good. I think that, you know, the amount of, you know, aesthetically from the road, they're all going to look very similar. So the difference between the two is very, the three are very slight.
We'll converse.
Yeah, well, go ahead. We'll let you finish.
Yep, so we pointed out where the, where the units are on the floor plan. We show you how many there are and where the location of those. I wanted to enter also into the record that in terms of square footages for the facility on Blacks Lane, the smallest is the one-bedroom, about eight-hundred-and-eighty-nine square feet. And the largest is fifteen-fifty-one, which is the non-COA unit. For a Church Mall, the smallest is eleven-and-sixty-five square feet, and the largest is twelve-eighty-three. And these are all net areas. They don't include the exterior wall. What I can do is I can make a copy of our charts.
sort of, or Mr. Jessup may know, that you have to evenly spread them out through it or does it, can it be clustered in one area?
There's usually language.
Yeah.
They don't, the goal is try not to cluster.
Yeah, because that's what we're doing.
Usually, usually. I, Mr. Michaels, I'm sure would be able to rattle off the language for you.
I want to readdress that when he comes back.
Yeah, let's, in my previous days and when I've done this, it's been, it had to be evenly distributed. That was a court order. I don't know what, if our ordinance says what or if it's a COA thing.
The requirement is there is no requirement in the one floor in the...
Well, I like to hear that from just my...
That's fine.
My thing. I know, there's Mr. Michael, perfect timing. Don't hurt yourself, we need you for the next five minutes. Do you want to ask a question?
Sure. You want to, you want to take a, a three-minute break or something?
No, no, we'll take a thirty-second, let him take his jacket off and I'll be right in. He's a veteran at this.
No.
The, the question that was being discussed was, is there anything in the township's ordinances, settlement agreement with fair share or any COA regulations that require that the affordable units be dispersed throughout the project rather than being all massed on one floor?
Um, no, the preference is that they be dispersed, but I don't believe, my recollection is that there's any requirement that they be, that they be dispersed. They can be concentrated.
They can be concentrated?
They can be, yes. Okay. Okay, go ahead. Anything else on that question?
I'm going to go.
Thank you.
You've, you've served your purpose, thank you.
If there are no more questions to Mr. Campanella, go to the other side.
Yeah, let's go and then we'll, we'll, we'll see if there's questions at the end. I'd rather get everybody's reports in.
Paul Craig, everybody from...
Can you just do me a favor, please? Can you just speak in the mic? Because this is being recorded and one of the major complaints we get from the people that do watch is that they can't hear you.
It's Craig W. Peregoi, who's a traffic engineer, employee of Dynamic Traffic by Orange and State.
Please raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Could you spell your first and last name for the record, please?
Sure, my name's Craig, C-R-A-I-G, Peregoi, P-E-R-E-G-O-Y.
I would agree with you.
Peregoi, you want to give the board the basis of your educational background and experience, please?
Sure, I have a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from Virginia Tech, licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I've appeared as an expert in traffic on hundreds of occasions, including here in Springfield a number of times. I pretty much do this every night.
Question, Mr. Peregoi?
I do. Yeah, it's accepted.
At, at the request of the applicant, did you do multiple investigations and multiple surveys after the impact, let's call it, as to how this particular project affects both Black Wayne and its other side street on ingress and exit?
Yes, in terms of the, the access to the properties. Certainly the access is designed, you have good site visibility, it's adequate design, very low volume roadways, both Church Mall and Blacks Lane. So in terms of access to and from the property, certainly not anticipating any issues. And thirty-six residential units is a fairly low traffic generator in itself, so those driveways are going to work just fine.
And in addition, did you do traffic surveys both on Black Wayne and on the Church Mall?
Yes, we looked at Church Mall, the, where it intersects Morris Avenue.
Okay, you want to tell, explain to the board what you did and what you found?
Sure. What we did is we went out there, we actually did two mornings. We went, we went back out this morning just for another verification of our data that we got before, which was back when September twenty-eighth. So the school was open and, and operating when we took our traffic counts. We counted that church lane intersection with Morris Avenue and we looked at the queue length every signal cycle. And I heard somebody mention that it's a long light. It is, it's a hundred and twenty-second cycle, that's usually the, the longest that the New Jersey DOT does, so two-minute cycle length. So each one of those cycles, we observed how long the queue was and did the queue clear out. And essentially, for most of the time, this is in the morning, seven to nine-thirty or so in the morning, we were out there. Between seven and about eight forty-five, the maximum queue is one or two vehicles. It clears out with absolutely no problem. It doesn't even use that entire nine seconds of green time. When the school starts to pick up, it's maybe ten minutes before nine and then it goes to about ten minutes after nine. That's when you see a little bit more activity. It does use that, that full nine seconds of green time. And the maximum queue that we saw, again, this morning and back in September was five, so exactly what Mr. Disco saw out there. And it did clear every single ti, every single occasion. The only time where there was an issue, there was one vehicle turning right, Morris Avenue was backed up, so they weren't be, they weren't able to pull out onto Morris Avenue. It had nothing to do with the amount of green time on Church Mall, it was just a backup from, from downstream and that was earlier in the, in the day. Not associated with the busier school time. So again, you're looking at maximum queue of five and average during that ten-minute, twenty-minute window when the school's gone of, of three. And we did model this in our traffic analysis software. It's, it's called Syncro. And it takes into account the traffic signal timing and the traffic volumes. It actually models what that signal controller will do, given the parameters of how much green time it's given. And it gives us a ninety-fifth percentile queue length, meaning ninety-five percent of the time during the busiest hour in the morning, the queue will be less than this, this, this length. And in the morning, it's calculated to be sixty feet, so three vehicles. So it fairly well matches what we saw in the field, what's actually happening. So it's an accurate simulation. Now, in terms of what we're proposing, how much traffic is generated by the thirty-six units? We use the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual, and that's based on research counts taken at other residential buildings throughout the country. And we're able to apply that based on the number of units to this facility. And the I T E data tells me that for the busiest hour, we're looking at hours at this point, so the morning and evening peak hour, one busiest hour in the morning, this would generate three entering and eight exiting vehicles for a total of eleven trips in the morning. And in the PM, eight entering and five exiting vehicles for a total of thirteen trips. Now typically, what's considered a significant increase in traffic is a hundred or more trips. That's when New Jersey DOT and the I T E look at where you may have a substantial impact. So we're well under that threshold. And that's not even accounting for any traffic that's generated by what's on the site today. So we're looking at a maximum of eight vehicles per hour accessing Church Mall, that's the maximum exiting volume during the morning peak hour. And as I said, during most of the morning, it's very quiet. It's, it's, there's very few vehicles coming out of there. It's only that little bit of the school time. But if you think about it, eight vehicles per hour, one car every four, three or four cycles. So every three or four times Church Mall gets green, we're going to add one extra car to it. So it's certainly not something that's going to exacerbate what's going on today. And certainly not something that would create a noticeable impact on the operation of that signal. We did model it, again, with the Syncro software, adding some background growth, adding a two percent growth rate to what we counted in our traffic. That ninety-fifth percentile queue length that I mentioned was sixty feet, goes to sixty-nine feet, so less than half a vehicle more. It's a mathematical calculation, obviously you can't have a half a vehicle. But it just goes to show you the, the minimal impact that you're going to see from this development. And it's really, it's not, we're not going to make anything different than you see today, basically, when this project goes in. And like I said, it's only a very short time where the school is generating that traffic and then the rest of the day, it's very quiet on Church Mall, there's certainly plenty of capacity at that light.
And that's assuming every single person and every unit's going to be using their car to commute back and forth to work.
Yeah, it's based on...
It could be that some of those individuals may be using the bus across the street to go into Manhattan or what have you, so.
You mean...
And then given time, given the amount of units there are, there may not be that many cars backed up even to what you're stating right now, right?
Yes, I, I, that's a good point. The, the I T E data is sourced from all over the country where, and it, and it's based on actual counts at similar developments. Here in New Jersey, we have a lot more accessibility to mass transit, so I've tend to see and I've done my own research counts at other developments, compare them to the I T E in New Jersey, it's almost a variable lower. So this is really looking at the worst.
We can't compare this to like Wichita, Kansas, you know? Really, you know?
Exactly.
But based on that, a mass transit going into Manhattan, that's, looking at that, I, I can't assume, you know, that there would be nine cars waiting at that queue at any given moment.
Oh, that, eight of them leaving in one hour, so if they all left at the exact same time...
Exactly.
And then, yes, then it would take two, two times to clear them out.
Did you take into account that there's an ordinance for an approved, it's not been approved, but a set number of units right on Church Mall?
Well, I added that background growth rate and we're still well under the capacity.
I, you know, it has not been approved, but there is an ordinance for twenty-four...
Four.
Up to twenty. Up to twenty-four units, so have you, has that been, because that's directly right on the corner of Church Mall and Morris.
And has access only to Church Mall or access to Morris and Church Mall?
Just, just Church Mall.
Just Church Mall?
And so...
Twenty-four, yeah, that's not, we're thirty-six.
Twenty-four, but if there is a queue, and we have to see where that driveway will be anyway, but if there's, and that'll be something we'll have to look at, but if there's a queuing there of two cars or something, you could have that blocked. Listen, when I ask a question, you don't have to answer it. I'm asking, you're muttering something. Please let the witness answer so I can understand it.
It, I mean, it's, it certainly depends on where that driveway was. It could be, but then it clears out every time that gets the green, so it would, it would clear out every time.
Okay.
And like I said, it's, it's twenty minutes in the morning. Otherwise, it's pretty free and clear.
I know one of the questions that, was in one of Mr. Disco's reports and the board had, was the satellite parking lot across Blacks Lane would either require you to go the wrong way down Blacks Lane or make a loop around the entire project back up to Academy Green, to Church Mall, back to Morris Avenue, back to Blacks Lane, and then make a left um, uh, onto Blacks Lane and right into that satellite parking lot?
Yeah, it's, we're, we're going, these parking spaces will be assigned to the residents, so there won't be a situation where you're looking for a spot and it's not available and you have to go to the other lot. You're going to know where you're going. So that, there, there's not going to be any traffic crossing from the building to the satellite lot.
All right. So are you pretty much done with your report right now or is there anything else you want to add to it or for us? Okay, that's fine.
I think...
Mr. Disco, did you have any questions that you, that he has not answered and that was in your report?
I think we verified each other's queue. Did you have a dispersion left and right on your queue?
Yes, uh, in the morning, it was about fifty-fifty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The, the striping of the second lane at the light, I mean, to dedicate the left turn and then the right turn, is there a problem with that?
I, I mean, it would be subject to, to DOT...
Of course, yes.
...approval, but it, it sort of operates that way today.
Yeah. I mean, the road's forty-one feet wide, you could easily have two twelve-foot lanes and still have seventeen for the incoming inbound vehicles on Church Mall, so.
It's, it's sort of...
It's a low-cost, practical thing to address any problem there.
Well, that...
They, they mentioned the, the driveway on the parking lot in the corner. Do you, I don't see that on the site plan, so I can't comment, but would you have a sense of how many cars would queue to reach that?
The...
From your field?
The, the, the other, the twenty-four unit drive, yeah, I don't know, I don't know where that is located, somebody, it's, you assume about twenty feet per vehicle, so if it's sixty feet back, three cars, so forth.
Okay. What if, would he be the person to address the striping on? Yeah, I would ask him. Yeah. So before you took, you testified, we talked about that Academy Way is a very large cartway, sixty-six feet wide, that, I mean, when I went down there today, I don't go down there much, but I went down there today and I noticed that cars are all over the place, even in that cartway. What can be done, because this is one of the roads that your development's going to service, what could be done to better point out that this, that there's no parking in the middle of the road? A better way of saying, because there's, it's just a big paved area and it looks like a, a parking lot.
It, it is.
And when snow happens, you know, you know, you have that, and we're a hundred percent sure that's the township plows that road and everything?
Yes.
One hundred percent, okay.
And, and I think Mr. Disco's suggestion was a good one to put, to, to stripe a shoulder line essentially to delineate where the park, where the roadway ends and the parking begins. And then a double yellow center line down the middle of it would make it quite obviously a roadway.
I think they agreed to accommodate that.
And I think that striping may or may not have been out there at one time. Looks like there's remnants of it, but it's been washed away over the years.
Any questions from this side for...
Nothing further.
This gentleman?
Okay.
And from here? No? Every question's been answered.
I want to hear from the public before I talk about Blacks Lane, so we may want to recall you.
Yeah. Okay, anyone else here? Okay. Any, yeah, let's take a two-minute break. Five-minute break, we'll come back.
like a parking lot.
It is.
When snow happens, you know, you have that, and we're a hundred percent sure that the township plows that road and everything?
Yes.
One hundred percent, okay.
And I think Mr. Disco's suggestion was a good one, to put, to stripe a shoulder line essentially, to delineate where the park, where the roadway ends and the parking begins, and then a double yellow center line down the middle of it would make it quite obviously roadway.
I think they agreed to accommodate that.
And I think that striping may or may not have been out there at one time. Looks like there's remnants of it, but it's been washed away over the years.
Any questions from this side for?
Nothing further.
This gentleman? And from here? No? Every question's been answered.
I want to hear from the public before I talk about Blacks Lane, so we may want to recall you.
Yep. Okay, anyone else here? Okay. Any, yeah, let's take a two-minute break. A five-minute break, we'll come back. All right, we're back on?
Yeah.
Yep, we're back on. Have, just on the traffic study, if you don't mind, have you looked at the intersection of Black Lane there as far as that one-way there and how it impacts anything there?
Yeah, I think the idea of making it two-way while on the surface, you, I understand the point, it would create a relief valve for Church Lane, but with the C V S driveway right there, I think you're just going to invite traffic from that center to try to sneak out and make the turn, so I think the disadvantage outweighs.
They do that now.
They do that now.
But they do that now.
They do that now.
You're going to make it that much more inviting if you, if you make it a two-way. I don't think that, the tiny little bit of volume coming from our sites, going, only going in that one direction, I don't think would move the needle, it would make a difference. The expense that it would cost building a wall.
I mean, what did you do there?
Creating more traffic issues, I don't think it's worth it.
But isn't long-term planning to better have two-way right there? Because, you know, when they, when they.
I mean, it's a finite, it's a finite area. I don't, I mean, it's a finite area. If you were going to eventually extend a road and put, you know, a larger.
Well, it's not, there's other redevelopment that's going to be in that area. That's, we don't.
Sure, but it's, I mean, saying it's a confined space. You got the highway right, right there, it's not ultimately going to become very much busier than it is.
You have, okay, that's fine, okay.
Any other questions from Mr. Michaels? I don't know, have you had any question?
No, this one, Mr. Michael.
Okay, of any witnesses?
No, no.
All right.
I'm assuming that, I mean, I did a report on the revised plan, and basically my comments was really about the housing issues.
The caller? And what did you think, based on what your response from the committee, I mean, from the applicant, everything you feel is okay with what we have, our requirements?
Yes, yeah, I think that some of the other, the issues that I had on my original that are worse, addressed with the exception of the affordable housing, but now after looking at the housing mix and the number of units, it won't do a part to the site. And they also added additional landscaping that I had asked for in the revised plan, so I don't have any other questions.
I have one more from Mr. Michaels. What's the, what's the cartway, the distance between Morris and the intersection to the cartway of C V S, approximately? Do you know, or is that something you can ascertain or not?
It's not shown on the overall key map, but it's an immediate right turn. So I don't know whether, on the curb line, it's twenty feet, thirty feet, it's on that scale.
Any other questions from the committee? No?
No, nothing further.
Okay. Why don't we open this up to the public?
For questions of any of the witnesses, or, and comments.
Any questions or comments from the public? Come on up, state your name. Okay, come on up, come on up. It usually only takes one, and then everybody starts going. Just your name and address, please.
Elon Goldstein, one ninety Morris Avenue.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Swear that many years? They're giving, not questions.
My concern is about the parking that's going to be behind the C V S, because we live exactly across the street. So we're thinking, instead of people going around, they're going to cross right to our parking lot.
Where's your parking lot?
Across from C V S.
Across?
Across from the, what they're going to do with the parking lot.
Okay.
Do the units across from C V S?
What?
The units in parking lot across from C V S?
Our parking lot.
Uh-huh. Right here, maybe? To the left, okay, so it's on Blacks Lane, correct?
Yes, yes.
Directly across from the drive-thru?
Right.
Okay, understood. Okay, and your concern, sir, again, I'm sorry, can you just repeat that?
So we're thinking to come across our parking lot, instead of making the right to go around.
Because you can come out from your parking lot on the Morris Avenue. It's way, right?
Yes.
And they would cut through.
Well, that's a one-way.
They're going the wrong way.
But it's one-way.
The other side, we can.
So, but it's a one-way, so would they be able to come out?
Right here.
Right now, it's technically a one-way.
Yeah, they would only be going down.
They do it right now.
Could, would there be?
As far as a U-turn, so.
In the back, in the, it's going back.
They're coming to Blacks Lane.
Right.
And we on the left.
Right.
So our parking lot, it's on the left.
Right.
The C V S, it's on the right.
Correct.
Behind, so they're going to be, you know, instead of them going around, they're going to cross our parking lot.
Who is that, C V S people?
No, people, they're going to park in the, the new parking lot, behind C V S.
Wouldn't, wouldn't they have to drive a couple hundred?
The wrong way down the street to get to your parking lot? You'd have to go down the one-way street to get to your driveway, right?
Right.
Wait, maybe Sam can help.
Just have.
Sam, maybe you can take a map and see if you can do it.
How far down would they?
Can you, can you explain to Sam, maybe show him on the map?
There's a good map attached to the traffic impact statement. This is more. Hold on.
Kind of on the back.
Guys, if you want to get on the record.
He's showing me, and I was going to clarify. Let me ask, are you concerned about people parking in the new parking lot?
No, they're, they're going to park here for, you know, for the new building, but instead of them.
He's talking about parking in the new lot six, off of the Blacks Lane. The new, the old.
Right, so instead of them making a right, they're probably going to cross from our, see, that's an entrance here.
Why would they cross to yours?
Maybe because to make a shortcut.
A shortcut to where? You don't go anywhere, do you? Oh, to go Morris Avenue?
Right, yeah.
But just, just to be clear, Mr. Ordina, they would have to go a substantial distance the wrong way down the road to do that?
Right.
No, he is talking about the parking lot, which is Lot Six, the proposed parking lot on the east side of Blacks Lane. If somebody parked there, rather than go all the way to the right on Blacks Lane, left on Academy Green, left on Church Mall, he's saying they're going to cross into their parking lot and exit on Morris Avenue, because there's an exit, right.
Is that directly across?
Cut through.
Wow, that's.
Not according to this, it doesn't line up. You have to go the wrong way down.
No, no, you don't. Right, Sam, you don't have to go down the.
They, Blacks Lane.
You're talking about cutting from block two oh nine, Lot Six, to block two oh eight, Lot Five.
Close, I don't know if it works, but, you're right. See, Sam?
I guess you can put a sign that says no cut through.
Is there a description where we can see where it does not line up? If it does not, in fact, line up? Because this particular picture is not really showing you that, you know?
Yeah, you're not really going, you're not really going up the one-way.
You could sneak across.
Right.
That's the problem, yeah.
Are there any same cut here?
Well, that's another reason why a two-way there would alleviate that, too.
Okay. Well, definitely, thank you very much for having a look at something about that. So this here.
This is the road.
But this is the, this is the bar, this is the same here. Yeah. Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead. Name and address, please.
Michael Tarantula, one ninety Morris Ave, T A R A N T U L A.
Same place as.
Yes, same as Elon.
Please.
Elon's the president, I'm on the board also. And if Jeff Tiger, if you were out there today.
Wait, he has to swear you in first.
Excuse me, sir?
Please raise your right hand.
Oh.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, if you saw today, we have a problem now with people coming down and then cutting through our lot. We have a number of senior residences, we have one handicapped gentleman in our building as well. They're coming through to access westbound Morris Ave, instead of going around, waiting at the light on Academy, two minutes, they come through us. That was our initial concern. We do want to see something get developed back there, move the town forward. Looks horrible right now, but we also, we don't want to have a safety issue, where somebody comes out, oh, I'm not going to go and cut around, I'm going to come out that, it's clear, no one's coming, womb, right through our lot. You could put a sign there, do not enter, doesn't work now. People are going to come through our lot. You're right through up, and pedestrians coming on the sidewalk, people on bicycles, Mac Cam are right there, they come up, our, it's a little bit of an incline, they pull up, wait, someone's walking, somebody rushing, make the right, you bypass that lot. That's our biggest concern. Another concern would be snow removal. Maybe it's not a concern, but two years ago at the big winter, our association, we paid over seventeen thousand for snow removal. That was without a front load or a dumpster removing snow. When you got to clear that lot out, that parking lot behind the C V S that proposed, you know, where's the snow going to go? So, all right, thank you.
Okay. You, Sam, you have something?
Yeah, I mean, I was talking to the board engineer, we can, they can change the configuration at the exit of that parking lot and force everybody to go right, just the way that entrance to C V S it is configured now.
Right.
So there is a way to do it with driveway configuration, to force people to go up on Blacks Lane.
Okay. And what about the snow removal?
Yeah, we have to ask them.
Okay. Come on. How are you?
Hi, good. Reverend Victoria Neay from the First Presbyterian Church in Springfield, two-ten Morris Avenue.
Is this why?
N E Y. And also, we have the building on thirty-seven Church Mall, and we have always been happy about a development here.
I swear.
Pardon me?
Please raise your right hand.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I did this a long time ago, I do. We're really happy about development here, but we have always been worried about safety issues, parking issues, and the density. And we actually felt a little more optimistic when we heard that Blacks Lane might be two ways. I understand the problems and how dangerous that could be, but on the other hand, you're going to have about fifty to sixty units of dwelling, plus two churches, and I'm not counting the Methodist church. We rent our Church Mall parish house to another church on Sunday, so we have about ninety average attendants on Sunday, the other church has about forty, and so you're going to put about fifty to sixty units of dwelling, plus all of these people, and essentially put it on a cul-de-sac, and that really worries us. We have also worried about the parking issues. We realize that the units have assigned parking for them, but unless you're going to make them sign a contract that says we won't have another car, we won't have company that stays over, there's going to be parking on that street that will not give us parking for any of our church services, that's the most important, but we have a lot of activities. And so these are things that we're just worried about, we are very concerned about it, so we hope that you will think about some of these other days, not just school days, but other days. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Back row? I thought you raised your hand back there. No, you're okay now?
Can we recall the engineer, the site engineer, and how he proposes to, you know, with the right exact amount of parking, how does he propose to, when snow happens? I mean, where are you going to put the snow? I mean, we've had other developments bring it off-site, like, what's the plan?
I am not the property owner, I couldn't tell you what the plan is. And it comes up many times when I testify before boards. We do not provide a snow location spot. I don't know if you've ever done any site design, you say you had, were involved with it before, never been involved with a development where a snow area, dedicated snow area, was provided, it just doesn't happen. The management of snow is entirely up to the property owner, I couldn't tell you how he, whether he carts it off, whether he carts it afar, whether he melts it, I really couldn't say.
The institute, the representative, the owner is here, and he says they'll take it outside.
And what, the parking, they get one per, well, how did that work?
The distribution's based on that.
It's an equation.
There's a total of thirty-six units, we have seventy-two stalls.
Do you expect guests in two-part on?
That's built into the function of what they do.
Can you speak to the microphones, please? Thank you.
It's my understanding that when they do these calculations, the concept of guests are built in for the numbers per unit, it's not just residence. So we met the criteria, which includes the rationale for guests.
Which was in the redevelopment.
Yeah, which is redevelopment.
Okay.
I have nothing. Academy Green is, I would assume, is the no parking 2:00 AM to six.
Right.
The whole town.
Yes, ma'am, please, come on up. Yeah, we're gonna... We're just gonna get your name, address, and we're gonna swear you in.
My name is Evelyn Schenak. I live at 97 Battle Hill Avenue in Springfield.
Can you spell your last name, please?
S-C-H-E-N-A-C-K.
And we will swear you in, go ahead. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do. Okay, besides living in Springfield, I also have been a member of the Methodist church on Church Mall for fifty-three years. And as Reverend I had said previously, that street is used many times for other occasions other than just these people that are going to the academy school as well as for the people who are going to be living on the street. We have other functions that meet, that have to have the access to that, that street. The other problem is too, I was here also when you were planning another building for the corner across from the Presbyterian church. That building there, you have so many floors above, it's gonna have people in it. And then on the floor, bottom floor, you had said that you were going to have stores there. The people in the building, the parking facilities were explained how they were gonna be parking behind one another and that. However, they did say that the people that were gonna come to the stores were going to be parking on Church Mall. Again, we're adding more traffic to Church Mall. And it's not just the people that are living there that's gonna be going in and out. I have sat many times on Church Mall and Morris Ave on a Sunday morning at this new light system that they had put in not too long ago. And let me tell you, you can get two cars through. And I don't know where you get your four and five, but there's two cars at the most. And then when you get around the corner to the right, the light is already changing to go up Morris Ave. You can get off to the left, but going up, we're already on a red light. So it's not a lot of cars getting through that intersection. And I'm gonna just say this other one too, while I'm here. When you get down to, coming into, by CVS. Anybody who just stands across the street, and you can watch this. Okay, not only the people coming out of CVS in the wrong direction, when they get to Morris Ave, to make a left-hand turn, if you have a two-way, two-way thing there, these people come whipping around the corner in front of where the TD Bank was. They just ride right on through, they don't wait. They don't even sometimes yield, they just keep on going. So if they keep on going, and you're coming out here trying to go left, you gotta be kidding me. This can be just as bad as when they put Walgreens up on the corner of Milburn Avenue up there and you try to get in their parking lot. So stand on the corner, see what the traffic is, then you'll know what the common day, everyday people are passing. I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? I don't see none. I guess the board, any other comments? I mean, this, this road on Black Lane...
Yeah, it has to be wide and...
I, I, my thing is, if we don't, we should at least see if, what the effects are. Why, you know, one, see if, who owns the land, or Jason, is it the town? Because if it's the town, it's an easier equation. Is it CBS then, or not? What the actual distance is from that road to see if that would cause a conflicting thing? I mean, it's happening now anyway. I'm, I'm the first person that, I definitely sometimes use that as a wrong way. But, you know, there, I'm worried you can, you can still get people that cut across that into, into Lot Five and that will make a left and go up there anyway, just to avoid that long traffic light when you can easily make a quick right out of there. You know, I don't know what the board feels, but that's my initial...
The, I, I was just looking at the satellite photos, and there's quite a distance between the, the egress of that proposed parking lot and the existing driveway for the develop, for the existing development. And in order for anybody to, to enter that parking lot, they have to go the wrong way quite a distance, which obviously is a police violation, and they can get a ticket for it.
You could have a cop sit there for one week and hand out violations if individuals were to do that.
Correct.
I don't know. Is there anything we can do about, to look, I mean, what would we, what would be the next step if we wanted to see about making Black Lane a two-way road?
Well, I mean, there are many things that has to be done. There has to be a, a survey of the whole area done, a very detailed survey to show who owns what. Then we have to approach the Department of Transportation to see what we are allowed... On Black's Lane?
Black's Lane, the DOT?
Correct.
You may need a light there.
Forget it. The DOT, in my opinion, and Mr. Disco can, can vouch for that, the DOT will never allow a left turn from Black's Lane.
We would always put a new left.
And, and even, even making that a two-way road, the DOT has to approve it. So, so work has to be done, survey has to be done, and, and, and a meeting with the DOT has to be done, also has to be, has to happen to see what the, what they will feel about it.
See, my thing is, we did the traffic study on, we didn't do it on a, we did, we did the traffic study, but we didn't take into account on the Sunday when church is there and, and some of these other activities that the public's asking us for. Yeah, you know, maybe it is only five cars for a two-minute thing. But as you add Sunday into it where everyone's leaving, you're gonna have a lot of people doing a lot of the cut-throughs. It's just, people do it. I don't know what the, I, I, I feel that we should, we should take the time, it's a big development here, to at least let our engineer explore to see what can be done and talk to the other side. See what the case is. See who owns the land. I mean, if it's owned by the township, it's a little easier thing. I don't know how the board feels, Jerry?
I think it's an issue. I really do, I think it's an issue, I just don't know how you resolve it. I mean, if that's the way that you're saying, or can we look to see? I mean, even if the town does own that property, we still need to go through that. We would still probably need to go through all that process. Right?
It's not for us.
The other issue, I think, too, is that it's not just this property today that we're talking about. It's all the other development going on. It's like a compounding issue, because it's not, we're not just thinking of this, we're thinking about all the...
We, we have another development that, an ordinance that was passed, same thing like how this redevelopment was done, to allow, I don't remember if it was up to twenty-four, up to twenty-one, but in the twenties, call it. Mr. Jessica, no. Twenty-four. Up to twenty-four. That's correct. But something will go there, and that will more exacerbate this. You have Sunday with church, I mean, we have to think broadly.
And the shopping issue that was raised.
That is, so I'm not in a rush to run to judgment without being able to, to do this. I mean, you, the applicant, Mr. Chair, if you're okay with this. You know, we wanted you to come back in, in September, October, you had, took some time. We need some time, so I would, well, I'll leave it to the board attorney. But I'm not in a rush. I'd like to see what other options we have to make it a safe area for our residents and to be able to make sure that we do the right thing.
Let me just put the statements, we have it on the record.
Can you grab the...
We have to talk to the microphone, please.
Okay? It's my understanding that we are not responsible for any of your off-site problems. Specifically, the law and the number of cases which I cited the last, specifically say the exact same thing. Site plan approval is limited to determining whether this development conforms to the zoning ordinance. Here, you not only have a zoning ordinance, you have a redevelopment plan. And we conform exactly. There are no deviations asked for. Second part, site plan discretion was never intended to power to prohibit a permitted use. And that's what you're talking about, which you're talking about imposing on this applicant a, a situation which we're not gonna do, and you can't make us do. And then the last part, you have no authority to deny, to deny an application based on existing off-site conditions. Those are three statements of the law, they're as clear as can be. We're willing to cooperate with you to deal with certain of the minor issues, the restriping of, of the green, isn't it? But we're not gonna do, Black's Lane is a two-lane road. We spent a substantial amount of time testifying as to why that should not be done.
You did not take into account the church time? You did not take into account other...
Those are off-track and, that do not affect us.
And I'll leave it as this, and I'm not gonna go any further. If you're gonna create an unsafe environment, that's what our job as the board to do, to evaluate if you're gonna create an unsafe environment.
Not according to the testimony by anybody.
You looked at a specific window involving school. Church has, there's two churches back there, they've talked about, that has different times and different windows, did we look at that?
We, we looked at it at the most concentrated times that are dealt with. They are the most concentrated.
I've stated my issues, it's fine, thank you.
Shall we move forward?
I wanted to clarify was... Speak a little bit louder in the microphone. There was a question about redesigning the satellite driveway to ensure that no one can make a left out of there. I don't know if you were, if that ever, were you willing to do that? I guess, Mr. Mardini, what would that be, just making it? What do you want to do?
If there's a way of redesigning the driveway, make it so it's less able to make that shoot across turn, and my engineer can deal with your engineers, we have no problem making that operation.
We're gonna take a two-minute break. All right, we're back on, okay.
Counselor, I, I would like the consent to allow us to let your engineer and our engineer look for the next, you know, you had four months, you took a hiatus of time to be able to evaluate what changes you need to make.
That's not correct.
Whatever, thank you. I would like, and the board can vote this as well, to allow, until our February meeting, to allow our engineer and your engineer to research some of the concerns. They may come back with the same thing, that, no, we can't do this, no, we can't do that, but at least then we're making an informed decision based upon all the facts. There were some different things that were brought up from the public and that came out of this meeting. So my, my advice would be to grant us an extension of time so that we can evaluate what the answers are. It's your call.
Give you the two answers. One, the reason that the, the reason that the delay took place was the confusion between the information received from your side of the table, which is one, we needed five units, and the other ones, we needed six units. And we had to rectify that before we came back to this application. Other than that, if you look at the dates of all of the information you had, they were back in October and November and completed. The only thing we didn't have was the actual number of tow units and how that worked. That was the only delay, and it wasn't on our part, that's for sure. Second, this issue was dealt with and extensively testified to when our engineer testified the first time, when he talked about how it was unfeasible for this, for Black's Lane to become a two-lane road.
Our engineer said it's possible.
Anything is possible if you're an engineer. But the question is whether it's feasible, whether it's economic, that's two. And I am not precluding the town, if the municipality feels it's necessary, that they have the right to come in, condemn whatever properties they want. They can assess us for whatever portion we have of this Black's Lane. What you can't do, and this is legally impermissible, is put this off-track problem on us. We have testimonies... We have testimony in the record today that we are, we are supplying a minor amount of traffic to this problem. I understand the issues of the church and Martha Story School and everything, but our project is of minor impact. That's the only testimony you have on the record. Unless somebody comes in and decides to testify to something different, that's all you've got. So we have a situation where a minor impact, where we're not responsible, we're off-track, and all of those things, and we just want more delay. And I have no reason to believe that that's gonna get us anywhere. And we, as I said, we've explored it, we've discussed it, we've dealt with it, so the answer is no. I'm sorry. We've already done that.
Jerry?
Yep.
If I may, as you are allowed to speak, I'd like to speak as well. I'd like to thank all of you today for coming and providing your your witness testimony. I appreciate your your reports that you have provided. I'm going to have the one hundred and ten percent say that I disagree with making Black's Lane a two-lane road for the information that you have provided to me, gentlemen, tonight in detail. It was succinct detail, and it pertains to this particular property and this particular project. So with that and all the information that you've provided to me tonight, again, I appreciate that, and I appreciate you coming out tonight and giving me this information. Because with this this information, the board cannot make a correct assumption. You cannot make an assumption on something like this. It needs to be succinct and exact. And under the laws you have stated, and we're looking at this particular property, I would like to ask the board to not, to continue to delay this project, but to move forward with this project. Thank you very much. We as a town look to move forward. We look to be progressive in a sense that we want to move forward with our redevelopment projects. And as long as this information is provided and is attested to that it is correct, and in fact, within the purview of the law, then I see no issue, and I take no issue with this. And again, getting back to the Black Lane talk about making this a two-lane road, I have lived in this county for forty-two years. Forty-two, okay? Anybody that drives around Union County can see the amount of cars, in particular on Morris Avenue. If you make that road a two-lane road, and if you allow maybe not to have a left-hand turn, maybe we, down the road, you're looking at long-term plan, and you make it not to have a left-hand, even just having a right-hand turn there would create an issue, a traffic issue. We have a property there. We have C.V.S. We have a property that has an ingress, not an egress, that would cause a problem. We would have to decide at that point, what would you do to stop that and make it a two-lane road? That is not what we're dealing with tonight in this particular discussion regarding this application. So that that's, that's my opinion, and that's what I'd like the board to take into consideration. We've heard everything here tonight. And I can't see, based on this information, a reason why we would not move forward with this project.
Any other comments?
Anybody else from the board would like to speak?
Okay, let's put it up to Bill.
You might know the conditions.
Yeah.
All right, the conditions that I have from the last one and from tonight. I believe that there was, the applicant would record the maintenance manual agreement that they would restrict the parking lot against separation from the other lots. There would be a crosswalk to the satellite lot from the main building. That the applicant would stripe Academy Green. And if feasible, reasonable, you'd work with the board attorney to see if there's a way to force only right-hand turns out of the satellite parking lot.
That's one way. Ask the other way.
Well, to.
We would agree with the, cooperate with the township engineer to redesign the driveway if in fact it can make something happen.
Right, that's.
Make a right turn.
Correct, that's what I, and also compliance with the memos of the planner and engineer, board planner, engineer to the extent provided in testimony. And the typical board requirements or conditions of appropriate bonding, providing copies of outside agency approvals, and paying all escrows.
One of those are acceptable.
So we have any motion to approve or deny?
A motion? Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve application four dash two oh one seven S. Veal Holdings LLC, located at eighteen Academy Drive, semicolon, twenty-four Church Mall, twenty Black's Lane, blocks two oh eight and two oh nine, lots six, eight, and nine for redevelopment project preliminary site plan, I'm sorry, preliminary and final site plan and residential condominiums.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
All right, do you have any comments you want to make? On the legal end on our end here?
State of the law given by the applicant's attorney is generally accurate, so consider this site.
Okay, all right, roll call.
Deputy Mayor Vasallo.
Yes.
Ms. Arasino.
Yes.
Mr. Tiger.
No.
Ms. LaBazo. Dr. LaBazo.
That's not why I was hesitant. Based on what was discussed, and unfortunately, a hard lesson that I've learned on the planning board is that we we can't vote with our emotions. The law is the law, so for that, I have to vote yes.
Ms. Grzbsowski.
No.
Chairman Fernandez.
Boy, oh boy. You know. Listen, I'm have not been in favor of this from the beginning, to be honest with you. I felt the residents never wanted just more apartments slammed in in one area. They really don't. I could speak as not as mayor last year, as being on the committee for the last six years. But unfortunately, it was passed by the planning board, I mean, by the township committee in the redevelopment plan. And they're right. There's nothing we can do about this. There's, it was passed. They've abided by every law in the in the planning board and here. So I have to vote yes for it, though on on the record, I oppose it, but I'm voting yes.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, we have an approval of the application.
Okay, I have a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Second. There's one. Did somebody make a?
Second.
All in favor? Both? Ah, no choice.
It's not for work, but.